Good evening. This is a continuation of the June 20th Board of Education meeting. The Board has been in closed session since six o'clock for the employment appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the district. Two, collective negotiation matters between the public body and its employees, or the representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees. Three, approval of May 23rd, 2017, closed session minutes. Could we rise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, equal to all, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda are public comments, and we ask that you speak for no more than three minutes, and the Board listens along with the administration. We do not respond during public comments, but we do follow up soon after the Board meeting. So first on the list is Carrie Kennedy.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Carrie Kennedy. I'm a resident of Elmhurst. I would like to talk to you tonight about the staffing changes at Field. Specifically, I would like to talk to you about the changes with Teri Nygel, our art teacher, leaving, something that has upset this community very deeply and profoundly. While I have very strong feelings about it, my friend Julie Prather has even stronger feelings. She's on vacation this week, so I volunteered to read a letter for her. That's what I'm going to do. Dear Elmhurst School Board members and Dr. Moyer, my name is Julie Prather. I am the mother of three current and former Field School students, and I am writing to express my disappointment in the manner by which Teri Nygel, art teacher at Field Elementary, was reassigned from her position at our school. A few parents first heard about it on Friday before Memorial Day, and it was not until the end of the school year that it was fully disclosed that she would not be returning to Field. It is disheartening that such little consideration was given to Mrs. Nygel and other reassigned teachers, as well as the families in the community. It felt like we were ambushed by these decisions, and we weren't even afforded the opportunity to say our goodbyes because of this rushed and poorly planned timing. In case you are not aware, Mrs. Teri Nygel is a legend at Field. My two daughters have graduated from Field School, and Mrs. Nygel still manages to have an effect on their lives. My younger daughter has been diagnosed with dyslexia and struggles with school at times. However, in her art class, Mrs. Nygel was able to instill confidence and positivity into a child who is usually apprehensive in regular academic art classes. Or, sorry, at regular academic classes. She found a place where she could excel. There is not enough I can say about her talents in the classroom. One of many reasons why it is so important to keep Mrs. Nygel at Field School is that she has created a student and parent supportive environment that will be a challenge to rebuild. In her time at our school, she has established and maintained an atmosphere with the Field community that took years to create. Aside from the wonders she works in the classroom, Teri runs the Field Family Arts Festival. This is a family night that I co-chair with her. The reason she started this night eight years ago was because she wanted to establish an event where busy families could come and create art together, with all the materials ready, along with assistance from volunteers ranging from former high school students, staff, and college friends of her own. The event began back in 2009 with six classrooms of hands-on activities. Today, it has 25 classrooms of multicultural activities. There is even an open mic night with a hot chocolate bar. This event has blossomed into a family night that I have never experienced in all of my own 15 years as a teacher at multiple elementary schools in other communities. It is singular to Field. Her connections to the parents and former students are key factors as to why she is able to run the Field Family Art Night Festival. The only reasons why the night is a success, besides all of the planning time that she volunteers for it, is that Mrs. Nygel has countless connections to high school volunteers who had her when they were in elementary school. They come back to volunteer for this festival because they remember Mrs. Nygel at Field Elementary. Because she is relatively close to retirement, it would be nearly impossible for her to have the time, or realistically, the motivation, to commit to doing this at her new school. Why not leave her in her current assignment until she retires in a few years, so that we continue to have the benefits of all the hard work that she has done in developing an exceptional art program at Field? It is not fair to expect her, in the few remaining years of her career, to go on building a new program and establishing the bonds and connections that are needed to create a strong, community-supported art program. If you remove her from our school, the connection she has made to enhance the exceptional night will be lost forever. Her absence will be such a detriment to our school community. The hours that Mrs. Nygel puts into the Family Arts Festival starts well into early January for one evening that occurs in mid-March. I know because, as co-chair, I meet with her for three months, beginning with once or twice a week, all the way up to five days a week until 10:00, 11:00, midnight, the night before, the week before. Eventually, the three weekends leading up to the art festival are spent with her. For an evening of quality art education, the students come out with a goldmine of truly gorgeous projects, as well as better memories than any of us can even imagine. Please reconsider Mrs. Nygel's situation. If you did, you would have strong support and gratitude from the Field community. Sincerely, Julie Prather. Thank you.
Joanna Spathis?
Good evening. Good evening, Dr. Moyer, Board members, and neighbors. My name is Joanna Spathis, and I have three children. It feels school last year. I want to tell you how much I value Teri Nygel. I have a lovely, quiet son, a teacher's dream kind of student, focused, respectful, and quiet. Very quiet. For two years, he never spoke without being spoken to. In first grade, his teacher told us in conferences, "You know, I don't see him. Alejandro flies under my radar." But he wasn't flying, he was languishing. His teacher was new to Field, but not new to the district. She bounced around a couple times before Field and was gone the following year. In less than 10 years in the district, she had taught kindergarten, first, second, and fourth. She had babies at home, teaching a grade she had never taught before. She really didn't see Alejandro. Months later, Alejandro actually resisted showing us his classroom at Brag Night, in favor of showing us the art room. There was Teri Nygel, surrounded by throngs of admirers. When she spotted Alejandro, she put out her arm, he walked right to her side, and she folded him in. He stared up at her, and she stared back smiling. Teri Nygel saw my son. She saw him, she nurtured him, she made him comfortable enough to create, to have confidence, and to find a voice through art. The theme of this year's reflection project was the story of me. Alejandro drew an elm tree. The roots are a tapestry of the Guatemalan textiles of his birth country, and in the branches are images of what is important to him. Peace symbols, friends, books, pizza, swimming pools, iPhone, and Mrs. Nygel's name in the beautiful leaves. Did anyone here reflect on the next quiet child at Field? When you made these transfers, did you see any of the kids who need trusted faces this year when they are facing a new principal and two new specials? I keep getting it explained to me that Teri Nygel is a .8 or a .75, and this is all to help her not to have to do .2 somewhere. To whom will this be helpful? I get that it's complicated, it's contractually sound, but please tell me, what part of the contract stipulates for Family Art Night? Is there a point value to her amazing work? What point represents how she looked at my son that day and saw him? I'm confused by how this went down, right before Memorial Day. It's your right, this is your district, Dr. Moyer, but this is our community. We enjoy privileges here, other schools dream of. We have engaged parents, a supportive community, resources. Why the cynical covert transfer? Why couldn't our kids, the ones at the center of your and her work, say goodbye? I posted my son's reflection project on my Facebook page when it went to state, and he received an honorable mention. Of the 84 comments, two were written by my elementary gym and art teachers. Forty years later, and they still see me, because they are part of my life's narrative, my family, and I'm a part of theirs, just like it should be. Please give Mrs. Nygel her position at Field back. She has earned every bit of our admiration, she is our family. Thank you.
Sarah Jensen.
I am here for several reasons. The first is I'm a mother of two at Field Elementary and soon to be three next year. I'm here tonight for three real reasons. One, to show my respect and support to our teachers, specifically those at Field. Two, to express my disappointment regarding the recent teacher moves across the district and within the schools. But lastly, and probably most importantly, to express my concerns about the manner in which our teachers are being treated and communicated, and the lack of transparency in communication with us, the parents, and the entire community. I get change. I get that change needs to happen, and I get that change can be a good thing. But for my kids, and the children that I know in elementary school, they get lots of different teachers, lots of different principals. The one constant for these kids are the specials teachers, those gym teachers, the art teachers, and the music teachers. They can remember those teachers for their entire lives. A teacher like Mrs. Nygel watches students grow over a six-year period. She knows them, she knows their personalities, she knows what they're capable of, and she also knows what they're not capable of, but how to get the best out of those kids. She builds on this year upon year upon year. She is not only an educator, but a mentor, a counselor, a creator, a communicator, a listener, a disciplinarian, and the list goes on and on. Mrs. Nygel consistently goes above and beyond on everything that she does. You've already heard from several people, I'm not going to continue, but I will say, as a parent at Field, and if you were to ask any other parent at school, you know, what is your favorite event at Field? Hands down, each student you would ask, and each parent you would ask, would be the Family Arts Festival. My children were devastated when we notified them of Mrs. Nygel's move. What bothered me so much was that this teacher wasn't even given the courtesy to say goodbye to these students that she's had for years, to say goodbye to those families that she's known, and to say goodbye to her fellow staff members. This lack of communication and transparency that the district is having with its own staff, and also the parents in the community, is very concerning to me as a parent. Leaders work with their people and communicate with people. In the absence of communication, we as parents are left to believe what we hear. Teachers are unaware of moves, had no input, and were told the last day of school, or the day they left school. It does not feel like this is the way that you treat high-performing teachers. It feels more like it's how you treat those that you don't value. If the teachers are the lifeline for our students, and this is how you treat them, how can you expect us to have confidence and trust in you, that you have our students' best interests at heart? You say that you make decisions based on what is best for our students and our children, but a lot of us today are having a very hard time understanding how that is the case. Thank you.
Martin?
I bet you can't guess what I'm going to talk about. My name is Martin Barron. I have two students at Field who will be going into fourth and fifth grade next year, and I'm speaking today to ask you to reconsider the reassignment of Teri Nygel. While I'm sure you feel there are important reasons for the reshuffling of teacher assignments, I'm not sure you completely understand the cost that we see that this reorganization will have to the Field Elementary School community. Mrs. Nygel is not just another teacher. She is both a cherished part of that community and one of its focal organizing points. As you've heard from previous teachers, and I'm sure you're going to continue to hear, she is adored by her students, and that includes my own children. As you've also heard, she's been a driving force in organizing the Field Art Night. Over its nearly decade-long existence, Art Night has become an important event for the entire community around Field, as well as a cornerstone of the school year for many of our students. My family and I began attending Art Night actually before we moved to Elmhurst, and indeed, it was one of the things that really attracted us to Field in the first place. It's also worth mentioning that Art Night is one of the few extracurricular activities that is open to all students free of charge. This inclusiveness is only possible due to the remarkable amount of volunteer work that Ms. Nygel puts into it each year. Finally, I'd like to, I think it's worth mentioning, that Field Elementary is already facing a difficult transition next year due to the loss of our principal. As art teacher, Ms. Nygel is one of the few teachers that students interact with over and over every year. So students are now faced with losing not one, but two of the most consistent presences at Field Elementary. I fear that this is going to increase the difficulty of an already difficult transition, so I ask that you reconsider Ms. Nygel's reassignment.
Mandy Pachalski?
I have three children, and my youngest will be joining his siblings as a kindergartner at Field this fall. Although you can probably tell from my accent, I'm not originally from Elmhurst, but my husband was born and raised here. He loves this community, as do I. I'm here tonight to voice my concern on the transferring of Mrs. Nygel. My children and I first learned about Mrs. Nygel's transfer at an art camp this summer. My daughter and oldest son proudly marched their younger brother up to Mrs. Nygel, introduced him, and said, "She will be your new art teacher at Field, Charlie." Mrs. Nygel waited to tell me privately that she would no longer be teaching at Field in the fall. My heart sank. You see, there are three names that seem to be the face of Field for my family, Mrs. Kling, Mrs. Poole, and Mrs. Nygel. I can tell you that although we have only been a Field School family for a couple of years, it was evident that first year how invested Mrs. Nygel was in our children and our school. Her dedication shines not only through everyday art projects with our children, but especially through her year-long planning and execution of Field Family Art Festival. I realize change is necessary, and we must embrace it, but treating our children or our teachers simply as numbers and not as people is unacceptable. I am disappointed and saddened that there's been no communication about these transfers to the parents and the students in the community. I'm saddened that a teacher who has been at Field for so many years wasn't given more respect than this. She's beloved and should have had an opportunity to say goodbye at a minimum. We should have been given an opportunity to say goodbye. We are a community that is involved and cares deeply about our school and our excellent teachers, and I'm here to show the respect that Mrs. Nygel deserves. As my seven-year-old proudly exclaimed when he saw Mrs. Nygel at art camp this summer, "Wow, Mom, she loves art so much, she even teaches it in the summer." I wish you would reconsider this transfer and allow Field to keep one of its most valued assets. Thank you.
Next is Catherine.
Good evening, Board members and Dr. Moyer. My name is Catherine Wydock. I have three children in District 205, two currently attend Field Elementary School, one will in a couple of years here. I've pretty much scrapped what I wrote down before, because so many speakers before me have eloquently touched on all of the main points that I wanted to address here tonight, but I am here primarily to ask you to reconsider the reassignment of Teri Nygel from Field School. Mrs. Nygel's classroom is a refuge for the kids at Field. Kids who struggle in the day-to-day sense with academics, but also kids who just have a bad day here and there, always know that they can go to Mrs. Nygel's classroom to get away from the pressures of the day and be understood, and have an outlet for self-expression. And I know that's the job of all art teachers, but Mrs. Nygel's classroom is a little different and goes above and beyond. In her 12 years at Field, she has stocked her classroom to the gills, much of her own accord, and yet still somehow knows exactly where everything is, and can help people like me, who was an art discovery volunteer, find mirrors that needed to be found for art discovery presentations during the classroom day. That's aside from the art presentation that she does, the art classes that she does. She always has time for anyone to help in any way. Like many other people that have expressed their concerns this evening, I'm very worried about the lack of transparency that's been shown recently. It's very disturbing to me the way that both Teri, from what I understand, found out about her reassignment, as well as the families not having an opportunity to say goodbye to her, when she means so very much to these kids, and the younger siblings know her well from Family Arts Night. They've always counted on the fact that they would have Teri Nygel to look forward to in their days at Field. I don't want to ever think of any school district that my kids would be a part of to be run like a business, but I know there are practical considerations that need to be put in place. However, a basic business tenet is to keep top talent, and to me, teachers are of the utmost respect with regard to what I place my priority with my tax dollars. And for my kids, I am very disappointed with the way that Teri was treated in this. And I would just ask again that you please hear our voices and reconsider your decision to reassign Teri Nygel from Field School. Thank you.
Leslie Van Meer.
Thank you. Leslie Van Meer on Indiana Street here in Elmhurst. Many of us are speaking about Teri Nygel. Unfortunately, if we had more communication, maybe we could speak to possibly the other Teri Nygels that were moved throughout the district. From what I understand, there was a lot of teachers moved, and so why are we focusing on the one that we know about and that we love so very much? I'm guessing that there's other schools that are feeling the same, and a little disconcerted that we have not gotten that communication from the district about all these moves. Joanna touched on it earlier, with Mrs. Nygel's heart and love for the students. I have a child who suffers from school anxiety, and in first grade and kindergarten, we would have to peel him off of me every day, and hand him to the social worker and run away, except for Art Day. That was the only day, that he would walk in on his own with a smile on his face and be ready to go. If that doesn't show her heart, I'm not sure what else does, and her love for students and the connection she has. I'm an educator too, and a former administrator, so I know sometimes tough decisions have to be made. One of the things we did in my old school district was implemented a very strong social, emotional program, and one of the things that we did with that was give a survey to students about who they connected with at school, if they were bullied, if something went wrong, who would they go to? Well, more often than not, it was the specialists, the special teachers, the Teri Nygels. With Mrs. Poole, Martin had mentioned, with Mrs. Poole leaving, and some other teachers being shuffled about, I really think that this was an error in judgment. I am concerned that we're not framing the decisions in District 205 correctly. As an administrator, I've always been told that when you're making a decision, you frame it on asking yourself what's best for our students, and I fail to see any way moving Teri Nygel is best for our students. Thank you.
Jackie Scholz.
Good evening. I actually just recently learned as well about the reassignment of Teri Nygel within probably the last 48 hours. Admittedly, I am a very busy parent, working full-time, but I think it speaks volumes that I am here, along with many of my fellow parents from Field School, on a beautiful summer evening, to talk to you about a teacher that we dearly love from Field School. I have two children at Field School. I have a daughter who's going into fifth grade, and a son who will be going into first grade. And as someone who is more of a science-minded individual, not creative in the least, I actually have to admit that Teri Nygel saw something in my daughter that I neglected to see. She saw that she had creative talent. She pointed out to me that she was actually a very talented artist, and I had completely missed it. And obviously, we've all been through school, and we've had certain teachers that stand out in our memory, that really make an impression upon us. And Teri Nygel is certainly one of those teachers who has made an impression on my children already. My daughter loves art. She expresses herself through art. She is one who is very sensitive and very shy, and I have seen her personality come through in her art that she's learned through Ms. Nygel, and that Ms. Nygel has helped foster. My son, having just completed kindergarten at Field, did not have the opportunity to have Ms. Nygel this year. And actually, at Brag Night, we talked to him in front of Ms. Nygel about how excited we were that he would actually get to have Ms. Nygel as his teacher the coming year. So as you can imagine, it comes as quite a shock to us and an extreme disappointment that we've now learned that he will not have that opportunity. He was so excited to go to Field School for kindergarten. We had the opportunity to send him to a full-time program for kindergarten, but we opted to send him to Field because he had heard about all of the wonderful things, and seen how much his sister loved going there, and he wanted to be there too. So again, similar to all of my fellow parents from Field School, we would really appreciate it if you would reconsider the reassignment of Teri Nygel from Field School. Thank you.
Okay, Fernando Valdez.
I am here to talk about the reassignment of Mrs. Teri Nygel. A lot of kids in my grade and class really enjoyed having Mrs. Nygel as our teacher, and a lot of kids would look forward to the day that we had her for specials, and a lot of kids would also sign up for her after-school activities that she was supervising. She enjoyed art, and she loved teaching the kids who enjoyed it as well. She was very dedicated to art. When you walked into her room, you would see the art on the walls, and you would see all the art supplies out, and she would speak about art like she thoroughly enjoyed it, and she was very excited to be teaching kids new concepts about art and this new world that they had never been exposed to, in most cases. I was disappointed and shocked that when, on the last day of school, I found out that she was going to be leaving. My brother, he's going into fourth grade next year, and I really thought that he was going to be doing some of the projects that I did in fourth grade, and I really think that Mrs. Nygel, she made those projects extremely enjoyable, and she made them a learning experience for me, and I am disappointed that my brother will not be getting that same touch. I feel like the other teachers who were leaving, like Mrs. Poole, she had a video, and she had a letter. Mr. Hartnett, he had an entire, Mr. Hartnett and the other teachers who were leaving also had an entire banquet. But Mrs. Nygel, she, nobody really knew that she was going to be leaving until the very last second that school ended. I would like you to reconsider the replacement of Mrs. Nygel in Fields as Field Arts teacher. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you for your comments. It was very eloquent. But thank you for giving us your feedback, and we will respond to the public comments. So we're going to move on with our meeting to approval of board meeting minutes. Are there any comments from May 23, 2017 Board of Education meeting? No. Okay, hearing none. Those will stand as presented. We'll move to reports and presentations. We have a first-place team about computer coding, and we want to hear more about this.
Good evening, Dr. Moyer, board and guests. As part, first I am Mrs. Seagut. I am the Computer Literacy Teacher at Churchville Middle School. And as part of our computer literacy curriculum, we teach students to block and line code. Besides teaching a language, coding also builds and strengthens problem-solving, critical thinking, communication, and collaboration skills. Code Monkey offers 31 free challenges of their CoffeeScript line coding language that students navigate through in sixth grade. When they announced their coding competition, I asked Mrs. Reader if she would sponsor us, and enthusiastically she said yes. I reached out to students who showed a passion for coding to build our team of 10. Eight of them are here today. From April 4 through May 1, thousands of students, hundreds of teams in over 35 states participated in the Code Monkey's Code Rush National Coding Competition. This epic event all started with a warm-up that got students excitedly jumping into the jungle of code and working together to solve 141 challenges. Elementary and middle schools competed in their age division for the tight race. The Churchville Coders completed all the challenges weeks ahead of every other school and received All Stars for each challenge, rewarding them with first place overall in grades six through eight. We were rewarded with a plaque. Who's got the plaque? Oh, we left the plaque in the back. We'll get it. A classroom subscription to the award-winning curriculum, along with $115 of coding books for the students to use in our computer literacy program next year. I am proud to introduce you to the Churchville Coders. We have Kayla Tatangi, Logan Maloney, Andrew Kocher, Addison Clay, Nick Dobrowski, Jackson Nels, Matthew Huffman, and Lucas Barmoda present. Not here are Haristo Tonev and Adrian Zwang. I'm proud to present to you the first place, Churchville Coders.
Thank you so much. It is now I get to read official proclamation that I have for each one of you. I'm going to apologize if I mess up one of you guys' names. I'm very, very sorry. Stop me right then and correct me, okay? All right. But I'm going to do my best. Whereas Code Rush is a nationwide competition for teams of students in grades three through eight, hosted by Code Monkey, Inc., and sponsored by DK Books, publisher of highly visual, photographic nonfiction for adults and children. And whereas Code Monkey nurtures problem-solving skills, logic, and creativity in an interactive platform that introduces student teams to coding in a real programming language called CoffeeScript, and requires team members to play through a total of 141 challenges covering programming topics such as objects, functions, simple loops, variables, arrays, and for loops. And whereas, beginning March of this year, the 10-member Churchville Coder Team began playing through a series of weekly challenges, ending with the team unlocking the last 40 challenges on April 17, allowing each team member to earn an automatic score between 1 to 3 for each solution based on the quality of the solution. And whereas, the following Churchville School Coder Team members competed nationally against other sixth through eighth-grade students and were awarded first place by completing all 141 CoffeeScript challenges without error. Lucas Barmoda. All right, all right. Addison Clay. Nicholas Dobrowski. Matthew Huffman. Andrew Kozer. Say it again. Kozer. Thank you, thank you. I like that in you. Logan Mahoney. Maloney. Thank you. I asked them to do this, and they're doing exactly what I asked them to do. Thank you. Jackson Nels. Haristo?
Haristo.
Haristo Tonev. Kayla?
Tatangi.
Tatangi. Thank you. And Adrian Hung.
Zwang.
Zwang. And whereas, a reward for their first-place standing, the Churchville Coders Team received a Code Monkey official trophy plaque, a yearly classroom subscription, plus 115 worth of coding books for children. And whereas these accomplishments bring pride and prestige to Churchville Middle School, to District 205, to their families, and to the community, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education and Administration of Elmhurst Community School District 205 express congratulations to these students, their parents, their principal, Gina Polk Reader, for her support, and to their teacher, Deborah Seagut, an avid coder who serves as computer literacy teacher for these outstanding achievements.
Okay, next on the agenda is Student Achievement Objectives. This is our annual report.
Good evening. Tonight's our annual report on the district's work related to its two student achievement objectives for the 2016-17 school year. The first student achievement objective is develop a balanced assessment system and improve assessment literacy throughout the district. The second is increase student engagement in all grade levels, EC-12. When I first arrived in the summer of 2015, there was no operational plan for the district. However, the district was about to embark on year one of MLI. Lucy Colkin's writing was slated for implementation. Work was set to begin on overhauling the ELA curriculum to align with the new Illinois State standards, and it was behind in its work to develop student growth assessments to be used in teacher evaluation. This is a lot at once. The student achievement objectives were developed as a means to focus on the work of the district and help provide meaning for the teachers at the classroom level and serve as a bridge to a more comprehensive operational plan, which will be presented to the board in July. Updated student achievement objectives will be included as a part of that plan. Dr. Henderson will now present the presentation on the actual work that has been completed in each of these areas.
All right. Good evening. I'm going to begin with our first student achievement objective. And as Dr. Moyer mentioned, that objective is to refine and develop common summative assessments in all grade levels and all content areas. So the action steps, the action steps for this objective are listed on the slide. We will go through each of the action steps in detail and then share the outcomes of So the first action step is to develop and refine common formative and summative assessments in all grade levels. Am I, there we go. Sorry about that. The first action step is to develop and refine common formative and summative assessments in all grade levels and content areas. The rationale for this step is to ensure that there is a guaranteed and viable curriculum across the district, as well as effectively using data to inform instruction. The results of this action step have varied by grade level and content area. The high school and early childhood are the furthest along in the development of their assessments. Our middle schools developed and piloted common assessments that will be used as part of their teacher evaluation. This experience has supported their growth in writing effective assessments, and the work in this area continues as they refine existing assessments and develop new ones. Our elementary schools and courses at the middle school that will be using Eureka Math will have common pre, mid, and post-module assessments that have been created and will be implemented beginning in the fall. We will also have an elementary team of teachers reviewing and revising the school-wide summative assessments and creating pre-tests to mirror them. You may be wondering why I share that our high school and early childhood are farther along than others. For our high school, that weekly late arrival time has really afforded them much more time to dive in more deeply and get the work done. So that addition of those three late arrival days for our middle schools and elementary schools next year will support this work as they continue to grow. Our early childhood process looks a little bit different. They use a portfolio approach. So their entire process is a little bit different, but that's something that they work on every institute day and every late arrival day. All of the assessments I've talked about so far are summative assessments. Summitive means that it takes place at the end of learning. So it's the end of a chapter of instruction, or the end of a semester course, or something along those lines. That's important information to gather, but it doesn't necessarily inform your day-in, day-out instruction. So our teachers are also working on formative assessments, which take place during learning and help teachers make instructional decisions. These are typically common across grade levels in a school or building departments, but they aren't necessarily common across the district. This is due to the fact that formative assessments are driven by the students in a class or grade level. They're short and quick in nature, and they provide teachers with just-in-time information to revise their instruction as needed. So what one teacher or one building may need as formative assessment information, it may not necessarily be needed. So step two is to increase the ability of teachers to formatively assess mastery of designated learning targets. And that is, as I talked about, our assessments, our formative assessments. So all of our EC-12 and EC-56 and 612 meetings focus on implementing professional learning communities. So as I stop there, I want to explain the difference between those letters and acronyms and what they mean. So once a month, all of our leaders, grades EC through 12, gather together for professional learning and for our district leadership meeting. It includes our coordinators, it includes all of our cabinet members, principals, assistant principals, and we work on topics such as professional capital and coherence that Dr. Moyer has often referenced. So that is district-wide professional learning for our principals. Once a month, we also meet as an EC-5 principal group and a 612 principal group. And that allows us to refine the work a little bit more as it pertains to that level. For example, at our EC-5 meetings this year, we talked quite a bit about implementation of new curriculum, because that was very pertinent to what was going on at the elementary level. At our 6 through 12 meetings, where they have dedicated time, either through late arrival days at the high school, or their planned time during the school day, have time for daily PLCs, we were more focused at 612 on PLCs. So it allows us to differentiate the work that we're doing by the varied levels, and so it supports us during that time. We also have a consistent school improvement planning template that will continue to support building-level professional learning communities. Dr. Moyer is going to take the next slide.
So as we've reported regularly throughout the year, our leadership meetings are professional development workshops designed to develop and increase leadership throughout the system in a manner that supports improved student learning. This year, the team studied the concepts in the books Coherence by Michael Follin and Joanne Quinn, and Professional Capital by Follin and Andy Hargraves. Coherence discusses how the right drivers of focusing direction, cultivating collaborative cultures, deepening learning, and securing accountability support systematic improvement efforts. I will touch on professional capital later in the presentation. Additionally, Dave Beadie and Kathy Baker, two of our coordinators, led activities on utilizing the rigor and relevance framework for instructional improvement, which incorporated work from the Partnership for 21st Century Skills, a think tank that focuses on deepening learning in the areas of the four Cs, critical thinking, creativity, collaboration, and communication. The grade-level principal meetings focused on implementing instructional rounds and supporting professional learning communities in the school improvement process. Dr. Henderson will continue to go into further detail on some of those as we move along
So when I came to the district this year, one of the things I noticed was that our school improvement planning process that each building used wasn't quite as robust as I thought it had the potential to be. And I felt like bringing a new process that was more deeply focused on data analysis would lead us to better school improvement plans that would really be more living, breathing documents. A school improvement plan isn't something you write in the fall, check it off your list of things to be done, and then not refer back to it throughout the year. It should be a living, breathing document that evolves over the course of the school year as you implement steps, reflect on how they went, and determine what your next step should be after that. So in the spring, in April of this year, all of our principals, including our newly-hired principals, joined Cabinet for a day of school improvement, professional learning. So we are working with a process called the Data Wise Process that came out of the Harvard Graduate School of Education, and it is very much focused on data and data analysis. So all of our schools will be using a common system with common expectations. Part of those expectations will be that they are presented to parents, the school improvement plans are presented to parents after they're presented to the board at its October meeting, and that twice, two additional times throughout the year, the parents are updated on the progress of the school improvement plan. Another step that we include with our school improvement process is that we do peer review. Another step that we include with our school improvement process is that we do peer reviews. So at some of our EC-12 leadership meetings, we will be having principals collaborate with each other and talking through how the plan is working, what a colleague might see in a plan that could be tried at another school. And that can be done grade level, but sometimes it's also powerful to say, for example, Churchville and its feeder schools, look at their school improvement plans together, since they're looking at the same groups of kids traveling through. Sometimes it's helpful to have principals break off into groups of similar goals and talk through the action steps that they're working on. So the process that you'll see moving forward, beginning in the fall, will be much more robust and much more tied to, much more closely tied to data, multiple sources of data, and what each particular school needs. And then in addition, each of our schools has been asked to include a goal on school culture, primarily focused on developing that culture of collaboration that's necessary for effective professional learning communities. So the next step was to increase the capacity of teachers to utilize data to personalize And that action is to provide appropriate job-embedded professional development within the PLC model and feedback within a growth mindset to assist teachers in their ability to collaboratively analyze student achievement data and use that information to adjust instruction. So the implementation of instructional coaches is where we really saw this action step come to life. Instructional coaches provide that job-embedded professional learning. Each of our instructional coaches, or in schools where there is more than one, they did one survey. Each building had a coaching survey that all staff members were asked to take. The results of those surveys were shared with me, and as I compiled and looked at the data, here were some important bullet points that I found. Teachers who worked with their coach once a month or more, some teachers worked with their coach on a weekly basis, but those who worked with coaches at least once a month, 95% of them agreed or strongly agreed that the work has had a positive impact on their instructional experience or instructional practice. Most common areas of support that was requested by teachers: learning targets, differentiation, implementation of new curriculum, and technology. And all of those are areas that tie back directly to our student achievement objectives. So they are working with the coaches on exactly the kinds of things that are going to help us realize our goals in the district. The most common obstacle to working with a coach was identified as time, and that was particularly evident in our two schools, which are Madison and Edison, who have a part-time coach. They found that that got in the way of their ability to work effectively with the coach. Elementary teachers, so let me go back for a moment. At the late arrival days for our high schools, the teachers are working in their professional learning communities, not necessarily as a whole staff. Our middle schools often collaborate and work together through, on late arrival days. Sometimes departments across the three buildings are gathering together. Sometimes all three schools are together. Typically, at our elementary schools, it's building-wide professional learning, typically surrounding curriculum. So the elementary teachers reported that this year, the professional learning that was delivered during late arrival was more focused, more relevant to their current work, and consistent across buildings. And that, I have to give a lot of credit to our elementary coaches, who spent quite a lot of time outside of school collaborating, working together on professional learning opportunities for the teachers during their late arrival days. So we found that that really paid off as we implemented new curriculum. So the use of data, including student work, is increasing as teachers strengthen their PLCs. You will see at our upper levels, teachers are bringing unit assessments to their PLCs to look at the results, not just to, not just to look at the assessment and say, was this a good question, was this not, but to really dig into the analysis of student results and say, what are our kids missing? What about the instruction didn't work? In a very healthy PLC, you will have teachers saying, my results aren't strong, but I noticed that yours are. Tell me what you're doing so I can learn from you and that my students can benefit from that experience. At our elementary schools, it's common to see grade levels bringing actual stacks of student work, whether it's writing, it could be math problems that they've explained to their thinking, and teachers putting that work out on the table and going through it, looking for common errors, looking for ways they need to extend some of our students that have mastered the content. But the key is to bring that student work to the table, because it's there that the teachers have eyes on it, and they start to become much more consistent in deciding who has it and who still needs support, or who has it and needs to be pushed and challenged. So when you see that happening in PLCs, our students are the ones that benefit, because the expertise by one teacher is then shared with all of the teachers in the PLC. And so that raises the experience for all of our students. We see an increased personalization of learning, because teachers are, teachers are sharing ideas. They may decide they want to do some flexible grouping across classrooms. They're getting ideas and resources shared with each other. And again, that student work is analyzed and pinpointed to support that's needed or challenge that's needed. You also see in healthy PLCs, there's a greater sense of ownership of all kids. So it's not just my classroom of students, or not my 150 kids I see for math every day. It's all of our students, and collectively, we're responsible for the success of all of So step four for this goal was to establish the grading task force. And the actions were to use assessment knowledge to establish a fair and consistent grading system across the district, increase the knowledge of standards-based grading, develop district-wide reporting system based on mastery. So the results of this, as I've reported on earlier in the year, we are, I'm sorry, we're using common assessments, that's one of it. So analysis of common assessments with schoolwide is taking place. Schoolwide is our elementary primary resource for reading. We have common assessments for those units. We're now looking to make sure that the rigor of the assessment matches the rigor of the standard and instruction, because our teachers have come back and shared feedback that perhaps the assessment isn't quite rigorous enough for some units. For some, for others, they feel it is, but others not. So that's where we're refining the assessments that we started with. We're using common rubrics to assess student writing. Again, that helps keep the experience students have consistent, not only across a building, but across the district. And as I shared before with Eureka Math, pre-, mid-, and post-unit assessments have been developed and are ready for implementation this fall. So the grading task force has been established for elementary. I shared with you before that we will be piloting at two schools this year, Field and Hawthorne, with the expected full elementary rollout occurring the following year. So the grading task force is working with Marzano Research Group, who does quite a bit of work on standards-based reporting, and the district actually had done some initial work on standards with the same group, I think, four to five years ago, if Charles' memory serves me correctly. So we're working with that same group. We've spent two days with them. We have our proficiency scales. We're refining that down. And then the next steps will be to work with the teachers of those two schools prior to the school year beginning, and then we'll be developing both a teacher guidebook and a parent guidebook to help them understand what goes into standards-based reporting. And then we will be doing parent presentations with parent orientation in the fall. So the second goal is to increase student engagement in all grades EC-12. There are five steps for that. We have our mobile learning initiative, our MLI, building capacity around the Danielson framework, implementing the workshop model, initiating and completing Math CDT, which is our curriculum development team, and then study and pilot instructional systems that promote student engagement. So again, we're going to go through each of those steps and talk about the results and outcomes. So the first step is year two of MLI, our mobile learning initiative. So we've been building capacity around the precepts of agency agility and access. We've increased the existing capacity of teachers to utilize Chromebooks through the SAMR model. And in a couple of slides, I'm going to go through that a little bit and explain that acronym again, because it's just another one of those education speak terms. We've been monitoring any system issues in grades four through 12. We're improving student engagement and increasing rigor. We're looking to ensure that every graduate is competent in the future, ready skills: the four Cs of creativity, critical thinking, collaboration, and communication, and identifying and redefining resources to include open content. So we'll talk about system issues. Our network improvements that were implemented a year ago have given us now a stable network for this school year. All of our online assessments were able to be conducted without any known network issues. So that is a big success for a district of this size. Internet bandwidth, bandwidth was adequate this year, but will be doubled for next year to accommodate more devices and anticipated growth in access to online resources. So our Chromebook repairs are about average for one-to-one districts. Adjustments to the Chromebook loner program and TSI parts inventory helped reduce delays in Chromebook repair turnaround time during semester two. And then the data center battery backup system that was installed in February will increase system stability and reduce downtime resulting from commed power outages and brownouts that we know can be very common, especially this time of year. Another result, and I had talked about this in April, when we talked about some of our technology usage by teachers. Our D-205 University offers technology classes for all of our staff members. We had 121 elementary teachers participating in introductory courses for technology, the use of Google apps, using Chromebooks for feedback, and the use of dynamic resources. We feel this is a very successful number, particularly as those teachers were really gearing up for the Chromebooks that are now coming to them. So one of our areas of emphasis will continue to be understanding and applying the SAMR model. So on this slide, it shows you what the SAMR model means. The first level of SAMR is substitution, and that would simply mean using a word processor for writing instead of a pencil and paper, using an app that drills you on your math facts versus flashcards for fact fluency. Simple substitution. Okay? The second level is called augmentation. So an example of using augmentation might be using a Google form for a quiz in order to provide immediate feedback to students versus paper and pencil, and then the teacher taking the quiz, grading it at another time, and even later, the student getting the feedback. Another way of augment, another example of augmentation would be using the text-to-speech function on our Chromebooks for writing, which has proved to be a very powerful tool for many of our kids who struggle with maybe the physical act of writing, whether it's pencil and paper or typing, but being able to use that text-to-speech really frees up kids and usually results in a lot, larger production of writing. M in the model stands for modification. So that could be sharing writing that you created with word processing or text-to-speech as a blog, so that others can provide you feedback and you could initiate a discussion. And then the R stands for redefinition. So we're really redefining learning. So instead of a written paper, students could provide analysis of content through multimedia tools. So that's where you've really taken the learning and redefined it. So often, you will see teachers start at the substitution level, and as they gain comfort and experience, they move up the different levels. It doesn't mean that you would expect to see everything at the redefinition level. Okay, there's certainly room in all of our lives for sometimes substitution. Okay, I do not write reports or board memos pencil and paper. It's not high-tech, but I'm using a word processor for that. So there are, there are times when you'll see all of the different levels in play.
Okay, so action step two has to do with student engagement, which is related to the Danielson frameworks. And I'm going to explain a little bit of that and what we've done so far in that, and then we're going to actually spend most of our time turning it over to some other people to explain a little bit about that. So the Danielson framework is a district's teacher evaluation system. Indicator 3C is engaging students in learning. There are four rating categories, I think I'll go back a slide here. There are four rating categories in the, in the, in the framework: unsatisfactory, needs improvement, proficient, and distinguished. The state of Illinois has required that people who receive the top rating are classified as excellent. Because of the discrepancy in the terminology, the district has been using the term level four instruction when discussing high-quality instruction. Dr. Rich Volts, the IASA Associate Director for Professional Development, has been facilitating Danielson training around the state for years. The district elected to utilize his services for this year's in-house administrator academy, which we do every year. And we pick a topic that we think supports our work, and so we used his work or his services in August of this year. In Danielson, the shift from proficient to level four is always a shift from the focus on the teacher to focus on the student. In Volts' training sessions, it becomes obvious that 3C drives excellence in every other aspect of the rubric. The book Professional Capital was used to reinforce supervision and feedback practices throughout the year. It was particularly useful because it focuses on capacity building within a collaborative culture that reinforced the district's work with PLCs. The district developed expanded networks of professional dialogue to increase collaboration on its key instructional principles. A lot of that was reflected in the data collection through the instructional rounds. Student engagement is one of those areas, and will be discussed more in a minute when instructional rounds are addressed. Student engagement is incorporated into the emphasis on learning targets and the work with rigor and relevance framework and Kagan Cooperative Learning Structures, which Mrs. Weber will discuss shortly. All of these work together in conjunction with the concept of 3C student engagement. Another example of consistency in the approach is the relationship between Professional Capital and Volts' coaching, which stresses how to use the four PLC questions in classroom visits and teacher feedback sessions. So that's kind of an overview of how we are trying to tie some of these ideas together with our work with our administrators and other areas, and I'm going to let some of these people get into some more specifics here.
So the first result we're going to talk about is instructional rounds. We've reported on that before, but to kind of bring it back, back full circle, our first year focused on similar grade level groups. So our elementary principals worked in different instructional rounds groups, and our secondary principals worked together as one group. The emphasis was on learning targets and rigor. As a result of the instructional rounds, the following results were noted. And these results come about in our data collection tool. So all of our principals used a common data collection tool that the Department of Learning and Teaching developed. The data, as we've shared, is anonymous as it's collected. It's not tied to a teacher, to a classroom, to a department. It's not tied to anyone in particular, only to a building. So we were able to look at results district-wide, level, as well as building by building. Those results then were given to principals to take back and share with their leadership teams and then their full staff. So the results of that data noted consistency among schools as to expectations with learning targets. There was an increased use of and understanding of learning targets used by teachers. There was a utilization of instructional coaches by teachers to support the growth and use of learning targets. And students, we found, as we moved throughout the year, were able to identify the purpose of learning. And the way, the way principals determined that and then scored that on the data collection tool was by actually talking to kids when they would go into a classroom. Can you tell me what you're working on? Why is that important? And we noted, as the use of learning targets became more and more common throughout our classrooms, our kids had a much better handle on what the purpose of the learning was for that class period or that subject matter. that class period or that subject matter. So we found that the results were very encouraging. Our principals noted that it was very beneficial for them, not only to get out into each other's building, because that's not something they really get the opportunity to do, but also to develop sort of a consistent inner rate of reliability. Because the principal group, it was a group of three or four, and they would go into a classroom, observe the learning target, look at how it was being utilized, come out, debrief, and decide to what level it was being implemented. So that discussion of the principals during the rounds really helped deepen their understanding and have our district expectations be more consistent. So another action was to improve the fidelity with which our Lucy Cawkins writing system is implemented across the district and to provide ongoing professional development and feedback to ensure effective implementation of the revised ELA curriculum. So for the next slide, I'm going to have Pia Bartelay, who is the instructional coach at Jefferson Elementary School, come and share some results.
Good evening.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
You're welcome.
I'm very excited to be here to talk to you about this. We know that no curriculum can effectively meet the needs of all of our students. It has been shown through research that, and just by curriculum developers themselves, that when they develop these, they know that the needs of all higher students, lower students, and even the middle students cannot be met simply by writing a curriculum without knowing the students personally. So that ends up falling on to the teachers, which provides a great opportunity. School-wide has been a wonderful jumping off point for us in order to be able to make sure that our curriculum is aligned to the Common Core standards and to make sure that we are implementing with best practice, which is the workshop model. So this year, as instructional coaches, we have been helping teachers to become more comfortable with the workshop model, which has allowed us then to also improve our writing instruction. Because when we first started off with Lucy, we hadn't jumped into workshop as a writer's workshop as much as we had hoped. And so this year with the implementation of reader's workshop, we now have teachers implementing the workshop model consistently across the district. We've done this as instructional coaches with PLC meetings, late starts, one-to-one coaching, team coaching, providing feedback and support by going in and doing curriculum and, sorry, lost my point, by supporting them in their classrooms with one-to-one coaching, by providing professional learning opportunities, and facilitating their PLC meetings. So through this work, we have supported and supplemented and sequenced the curriculum and made sure that it was aligned to the Common Core standards. We have helped teachers create learning targets that are aligned to those same standards, which then allowed us to create formative assessments with teachers that, again, are aligned, aligned to those learning targets. So you'll see that it kind of goes back to those goals that Dr. Moyer and Mary have talked about all evening. We also help teachers to reform and improve their classroom libraries. We organize them, create workshop environments and classroom environments, and basically helped, we've been working all year to make sure that our reading curriculum is meeting the needs of all of our learners throughout the year.
Yes, thank you. So step four of this objective was the initiation and completion of the math CDT process. So our math guru, Dave Beatty, is going to come up and share some of the work that's been done this year.
Thank you, Mary. So I, first I have to thank all of the teachers who participated and spent hours and hours and hours working on the math curriculum that we currently have and will be implementing in the fall. It's really their work that has created what we're looking at now. We actually spent, just spent a number of days with coaches and principals at all levels, K-8, working on how are we going to do this? What is this going to look like? Making sure that everyone was prepared for what this is going to look like next year. Oh, okay. Oh, here we go. So grade level teams, we had teams working on building this curriculum using the Eureka Math as a resource. It's a core resource, kind of like what school-wide is for ELA. It is not our curriculum. We've built our curriculum using that as a resource. We've got assessments built. We've got, the, the resource itself comes with formative assessments, which we talked about earlier, how teachers are going to use data from students in order to interact daily and make instructional decisions as they go. So in terms of resources, everything is on its way. We're, we're actually printing a lot of the resources in districts. It's one of the great benefits of using Eureka Math is it is, it's under the Creative Commons licensing. So we can actually print it in-house at York High School, have it bound, and save a lot of money in the process and not purchase books directly from Great Minds and get access to the same exact resources. In fact, we can even edit those things. We can change this. We can edit this assessment. We can change this lesson. We can take this piece out, add this piece in. So over time, the resource will become more and more District 205 and less and less Eureka Math. So we can really tailor those resources to our students, the students we see in our schools. We have professional development going on right now. Multiple classes actually going on today, but throughout the summer, in the spring, and also in the fall, about a third of our elementary teachers early adopted the Eureka Math resource this year. And the rest of the, the teachers who weren't early adopters, of those, about 80% have taken one of these two-day courses to learn more. Those courses are being led by our curriculum development team, who are also early adopters. So it's teachers being able to teach other teachers about what this is, how does it work? It's not, you know, it's not me. It's actually our teacher leaders, which again, I have to thank all the people who are putting this, who have led this professional development. It's been really, you know, it's teacher-led throughout. And then lastly is, I, you know, I made a point to be present at every school, at every school's PTA. I've been to, throughout the year, talked about what this curriculum is going to look like, answered questions from parents, trying to make sure that it's incredibly transparent to what we're going to be doing here next year. And I, and I look forward to continue doing that as we move into next year and going to PTAs and answering questions, talking about, we're going to have consistent messaging that's going to go out through curriculum nights throughout all of our schools so that everyone's hearing the same messages. So want to make sure that that is the case so no one's caught unawares.
Awesome. Thank you. So I really have to thank Dave because as you listen to the process that he laid out, that's a successful curriculum development and implementation. And when I came here in the early fall and talked to you about changing resources mid, partway into the, in the late fall for ELA, we talked about how the rollout had not gone as it should and moving forward that we would expect to see a different process used. And so this is an example of the process that's effective and what you should expect to see moving forward into other curriculum areas. So step five was study and pilot instructional systems that promote student engagement to include but not limited to Quantum and Kagan. This year, we really focused on Kagan Cooperative Learning Strategies. We have invested in several of our principals going to training and our instructional coaches. And Leslie Weber, our principal at Jefferson, is going to come and speak to that a little
Hi. Earlier this year, actually, some of my colleagues and I presented Kagan structures to you, and you actually participated in one of those activities, if you remember. So we were very excited, and that was really fresh in the beginning of the year. Moving forward with the school year, one of the things my colleagues and I did at our administrative meetings was to kind of branch out and, within our professional learning community as an administrative team, the, my colleagues that attended some of the Kagan training then brought those structures to our administrative team meetings so that the principals that could then bring those to their staff in their building during their staff meetings. So even though not every single person was trained, it was kind of almost like we were the leaders, and then we helped our principals, our, our colleagues present that to their staffs. You know, we talked about how student engagement is a critical piece of student learning. It allows for accountability for every student. It allows for them to individually think. It allows them to be also involved socially and learn some of those social skills that they may not always learn, but kind of that all-encompassing piece of engagement. Within my own building, I was able to collaborate with Pia, who's here today, my instructional coach. And what we did was we presented the philosophy behind the Kagan structures to our staff and then at, kind of focused on one structure a month, so small pieces. So every month, we would focus on a structure and present that to staff, and then all of the meetings within that month focused on that same structure. Then teachers use those structures and that, that structure in their classroom during that month, and Pia and myself would go in, help coach the teachers, and support them in that piece. What we found was, is that when using those specific structures, they promoted student engagement, developed thinking skills for students, they increased their social skills and their self-esteem. We've had positive feedback from all the members of our learning community, and it's even amazing how just the classroom environment at the end of the school year, a lot of our teachers are thinking ahead for next year, and they were breaking down their classrooms and rebuilding their classrooms so they could see what a cooperative learning environment looks like. And they would bring Pia in, and if my, if we moved desks this way, and we could do this this way for next year, how is that going to impact and how is that going to continue this process we're in? Because we kind of started a little later in the year in October, and they had kind of established, and sometimes they were a little nervous to move past their normal, what their classroom environment looks like. So we've moved forward in doing that. And it's been a wonderful piece to have Pia trained as well so that together as a collaborative team, we can present that information and support our teachers.
So I would just build on Leslie's remarks just a little bit. I think she sells herself a little bit short. Leslie has sought out quite a bit of training and is looking to become a certified trainer for Kagan so that we can then utilize her as a resource for our teachers and our staff members here. So she really has jumped in with both feet to seek out these ways to engage our students and then become a leader in the district. So rather than sending people out to conferences, we're able to do the training in-house. So. And so I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Moyer now for the summary.
A lot of this has been described on an ongoing basis or presented on an ongoing basis at board meetings throughout the year. We're trying to consolidate this into one here at the end of the year, just to bring it together a little bit, but also launch into the fact that when you see what's coming the next year, it will be easier to make connections and see that it's really just a logical extension of the work that's been going on. We're going further, we're going deeper, but we're not moving the target around. The primary, big, big ideas will be the same. And so it's kind of a, a review in some ways, as well as it is a bridge to what's coming So as it relates to a work on assessment, York and Early Childhood are in pretty good shape. KH progressing, has some work to do. Some content areas and grade levels are further along than others. And the assessments we will be implementing with Eureka Math are solid. We've made progress. We still have a lot of work to do, and assessment will continue to be a focus area for us moving forward. And we're going to actually need to accelerate our work on this objective next year. The focus on learning targets and the significant improvement we've seen in this area will help. We need to increase our capacity to access and utilize data to support these efforts. And the work of the grading task force is off to an excellent start, and along with the learning targets, will also help us support this work. In regard to student engagement, MLI implementation has been successful. There's been, you know, I go to classrooms quite a bit, and there's more writing and research evident in the classrooms. Increased collaboration and instruction is, in most cases, more student-focused. We need to continue to problem-solve the backend types of issues and repairs and, you know, the infrastructure types of things that might be reflected in future facility projects. So we can't lose track of that, and we have to continue to invest in our teachers and help build their capacity and improve their ability to use technology in their classrooms. There is an increase in the utilization of Kagan strategies. The focus on STEM continues. Makerspaces, we've reported on those, for example, at Edison and some other schools have reported on that earlier in the year. One example that I encourage you to consider if you have a chance, our entire summer school at Fisher is all a thematic STEM problem-based curriculum. And I was over there the other day, and it was really interesting to watch them work with the students. The P-21 website, Rigor and Relevance Framework, will be among the resources we continue to utilize to support the work. With new administration at York getting acclimated in its first year this year, the use of dynamic resources did not progress as quickly as intended, but this will be a focused district-wide next year. York's focus on college career and life readiness and career pathways will have a significant positive impact on student engagement. And when you see the student achievement objectives moving forward into next year, you'll notice that everything that we're doing with curriculum, so next-generation science standards, anything that we're doing is always couched in the student engagement objective. Because we don't feel that we should view anything in, in our curriculum work other than through the lens of student engagement, that if we don't do that, we would be missing the boat. So we want that to be at the forefront and the onset, at the beginning stages of any curriculum work that we do. So that's a little bit of a synopsis of some of the things that, that we talked about tonight. Thank you very much. I know that it was a lot, but it's, it's the important stuff, I think. So.
Okay. Thanks. Are there questions from board members? Who's going first? Kara?
Okay. Thanks for all the information. It's a lot. So one thing, the standards-based reporting that is being piloted next year, correct? Can you just, there's a lot going on. There's a lot of changes, a lot of new stuff. Can you, can you explain why that's important to do now versus push off?
That's a really great question. One of the frustrations of our teachers is that the report card as it exists now no longer matches our curriculum. Because all of our new curriculum is aligned to standards directly. The old report card doesn't align to standards. To simply change a report card without getting into why do we assess? What's the importance of learning to assess by standards would be really just an exercise in futility. You'd have to go back and circle that back anyway. We're very fortunate that the principals at Hawthorne and Field both have extensive experience in standards-based reporting, so they will be able to lead their staff through that as well. The assistant principal that is going to be at Hawthorne part-time also has a lot of experience with standards-based reporting. So the leadership, even though it's new principals and a new AP, are very experienced and well-versed in standards-based reporting. But it gets down to the way that our teachers are teaching now. Everything that they do is aligned to standards. So it's, it's incredibly frustrating then to try and complete a report card for a family that doesn't align with the curriculum.
I just want to follow on. So because Mr. Beatty's done such a good job, it seems, to implement the math, do you see using that model or some of that same strategies to implement the standards-based grading so that it's a smooth process?
Yes. So we do have a team of teachers who are working with the proficiency scales, which is what you use to determine how far along a student has progressed in meeting a particular standard. So those teams have gone through all of the proficiency scales to see which ones apply to our instruction here in Elmhurst. Then we'll be piloting it at the two schools, gathering feedback throughout the year from parents, teachers, and students. Because even though in elementary school typically you think of report cards for students, when it's standards-based, kids are able to much, to understand much better what the, where their strengths are and where the areas are in which they need to where their strengths are and where the areas are in which they need to continue to grow. And they start to own their learning sooner than what we might expect to see. So that feedback, as I shared with the two schools' parents, parent meetings that I ran, we will be soliciting their feedback throughout the year to see, is it giving them the kind of information they need to help their child at home, whether it's through extended learning opportunities, additional support, whatever the case may be.
Okay. Anyone else? John?
I'm just trying to attach this to things we've done in the past. Is this in place of what we used to do when we would receive student achievement results? We used to have it in August and we used to go over, I mean, how does this fit in what we're doing tonight with that?
So the KPIs are more of a way to verify curriculum, to implementation, to verify that your programs and your students are meeting expectations. It gives you a holistic view of large groups of students or the entire district. This, the student achievement objectives are a way to ensure that we have a process in place that feeds into what you ultimately see as KPIs, that will help ensure that we get the results that we're looking to get. So this is more of, you know, annual goals to keep the school improvement plans focused, to keep the professional development focused, to make sure that we have processes in place that feed into these KPIs. And so those reports will still happen. They will probably, in the state of Illinois, never again happen in August. They typically get pushed back into, you know, October, November, December, whenever we get information. But you will still get all of that information and all of that information will still be in the operational plan under student achievement. This is more just part of the process of what we're doing too. Is that?
Yeah. I guess I'm just kind of confused by the, some of the language used. The results in this presentation are teachers doing things. And so I guess I was confused that that's not really the result. That's really, those are the actions, not the results.
Well, that's true.
Or they're the organizational results that will produce the student outcomes.
Yeah. If you look at the, if you look at the way the student achievement objectives are actually written, the language that we use on those forums are just the language that I used when I, when I transported it into the slides. So, you know, if you want, what this is, is this is kind of the district global thing. And then when the principals write their school improvement plans, their goals are going to be much more targeted based on these big ideas. So they'll actually have goals that reducing gaps by 10% or, you know, 95% or more of our students will, whatever. And then they will, they will build off of these. So these aren't really meant to be that level of specificity. They're meant to guide, you know, the work that's going on in the buildings. And then even further, the actual principal goals themselves, or the actual department goals that they have at high school, take the school goals into an even more finite, granular level and get into even greater specificity.
Thank you. You know, I appreciate all this stuff is research-based and it's all, but I was just a little confused how it fit in with the sort of thing that, you know, we're trying to get out there to the community and trying to show the results of what this is doing. This is more like a framework of what we're going to do, more than it is, you know, what's been done. That's my simplistic, overly simplistic view of it.
So it's really what, you've got philosophy that you bring into the whole district and a vision. And it is getting into everyone's hands, how they fit into it. And in that framework or that, how we teach, what we teach, what we, what content we provide, like the Eureka Math, for example, or ELA. And all of those things fit into this framework that then you'll show the results when you have the KPIs. But it's everyone kind of having the same roadmap and philosophy and buying into it. So I say that, and it was good lead-in, but two, the question that I have around, this is an awful lot for our district. And so, and I kind of have a sense because I hear some, you know, like kind of what's going on, right? And piece parts. And I can maybe put it together because you've got, you know, different late days and professional development and the, our own District 205 University that you've implemented and all those sorts of piece parts again, or times and places where our employees and teachers can feed in to learn these things as to how they incorporate it into their day-to-day work in the classroom. So I'm trying to say that, one, to say, you know, am I getting it right? Two, to share with other people that don't even get as much as we get, to try to put this together, to say how it is a district-wide approach that's getting everyone on the same page. Yes, it is a lot, but you've got some methodology to it. And you're utilizing these opportunities that our teachers are all together to, to help them understand how it all, like the bigger picture and how each piece fits in so that they understand how to, how it fits into their classroom. Because that's ultimately what we're about.
Right. Ultimately, it needs to benefit the students. And so you're right, it has to come down to the classroom level. And to add to that support is the instructional coaches who are in those buildings every single day, ready to support teachers with bringing all of this together. So one of the things you hopefully noticed throughout the presentation was a repetition of a lot of things. You heard learning targets many times. Well, that's because learning targets, when you have clear learning targets in the classroom, explaining to kids what they'll be doing, you're going to increase student engagement. It gives you a clear sense for the teacher of what you need to assess to determine whether or not the students got it that day. And so when you see instructional rounds are taking place and looking at learning targets, well, we know that that's because it's so important for assessment and student engagement. So as teachers take part in professional learning about learning targets or work with their coach on learning targets, it's going to, almost like a spider web. It impacts their practice in multiple ways.
So the last comment that I have is a, it's a testimony. I was asked to go to Hawthorne. It's a school I'm assigned to as a board member. And I went into various classrooms and third grade, I, you know, finally asked, because I've seen it for a couple of years now in our rooms, on the whiteboard or on a poster board is the learning targets. And I said, you know, by the way, I asked a teacher, you know, what do you think about that? And she's like, oh, she was all excited. And she wanted to engage the students because they love talking about it. It was fascinating to hear the students talk about why they liked it. And typically, the students aren't looking at something like that. Well, you know, it's more like adult, you know what I mean? I said, I would have loved to, and my kids are 23 and 25, to have seen that. I had to kind of assess what are they learning as you are helping out in the classroom. But you now, as a parent, can look at what they're learning in each content area. And the students said it helped them. And the key thing was a young man who said, when my mind gets out of focus, I get to look at the board and say, oh, that's what I'm supposed to be doing. I mean, those sort of testimonies from third graders, I thought was fabulous.
I don't have, well, actually, I do have one question. But I wanted to say thank you very much. I think this, this presentation, there was a lot and it should be because this is what we're all about.
Our teachers are doing a lot for our kids.
You know, we're all about student achievement. And in my mind, when I'm trying to frame exactly what this is, this is, and this is in business terms, so apologize this language here, this is kind of like a strategic plan. You put together a big strategic plan and then you start working through the steps on what you want to do and how you're going to accomplish each one of these items. And at some point in time, and this is where my question's going to come up, at some point in time, after you've implemented those, you step back and you say, how did those work? Were those successful? I wanted to say, I thoroughly appreciated, throughout the presentation, I heard about how you gained, how you engaged the staff, how you engaged the administrators, how everybody was engaged, and how there was feedback that was given. And I thought it was also very encouraging to hear that the feedback was coming from, you know, at some point in time, the elementary students. They were giving their feedback on what this was and how they liked that. And I think that's really important. And I certainly applaud you for doing that. I'm wondering, here's the question, at what point in time will there be an assessment to say, the strategic plan that we've been doing and that we've been working hard on implementing, how has this benefited District 205? So I don't know. I know this is still early, it may be still early on, but I'm wondering when that will come into play and what that might look like. How will we know it was successful? It did what we wanted it to do?
I mean, I'll start. I know what I want to say. Oh, good, thanks. Well, you know, with any strategic plan, your assessment and gathering of input and feedback has to be ongoing because it needs to be agile enough and flexible enough to make a mid-course correction if something's not working. So, you know, one of the, one of the ideas in the strategic plan seems a little abstract when we talk about future-ready learning. How are we going to know? Because admittedly, that's a really tough one to measure. There isn't a lot out there to particularly assess for that. So as leaders, what we look for when we think about the rigor and relevance framework and we think about, as you've seen, that quadrant D, that's where we know we're preparing kids for college, career, and life. And we look for that type of instruction. When you see that type of instruction that really is building on kids' critical thinking and collaboration and communication, you'll see assessments that are driven by that. And you'll see, you know, things really start to play out there versus just learning for the sake of school success. But that's a work in progress because it's a new, newer concept to assess and measure. Certainly, you know, you saw this year with ELA where we knew early on that the rollout was not, is not what we should expect for our students in District 205. So we had to make a mid-course correction. And while that is going well, as I shared with some of the assessments, our teachers aren't convinced all of the assessments are rigorous enough, which is great feedback and is something that a team of teachers is going to tackle. So a lot of it is embedded into the different action steps and goals to be ongoing. I think as we begin to see these more robust school improvement plans, and they will have very school-specific measures tied to them, we'll start to see whether, whether we're being successful or not. Do you want to add to that?
I do just a little bit. So, bringing a couple of thoughts down here. First of all, I don't think that we are going to be able to completely answer those questions to the extent that will satisfy any of us until we have, until we're a lot further along in our work of developing our common assessments. We do not have enough internal timely information on how our students are doing, but there are things that are in progress. So for example, the KPI, this is, it goes back to something you asked before, the KPI of all students reading on third grade, reading on grade level of third grade. We have some teachers that are using Fanta's and Pennell testing in some classrooms across the district, but we're not consistently able to verify how all students are growing in reading in grades K-3. Next year, we will be able to begin to accumulate that data and begin to use it and begin to track it over time. And so there are so many of these things that are in process that it's probably an answer that frustrates you to some extent because it frustrates us. But the way we're reconfiguring the administrative team is designed to improve our work and assessment, also designed to improve our ability to use data, our ability to analyze programs, our ability to get data in the hands of the users, and our ability to get more scientific about being able to answer those questions. And so that's, that's part of what we talked about in the hiring process with the new candidate who's here tonight. So the other thing, though, that Mary talked about, which is critical, is strengthening our school improvement process. We tried to make some inroads in that this past year, did not get as far as we wanted. Mary has taken that to heart. And the combination of being able to strengthen our school improvement process with more sophisticated data and users who can use data more effectively and have access to real-time data is what's really going to move that needle. At the same time, the old traditional measures of attainment, the annual measures will still be there, like nobody's, we're still measuring people that are either taking AP classes or in college equivalent courses in high school. We're still going to measure growth on PSAE and other standardized measures. Those things are going to be part, though, of a more sophisticated battery that gives us a more complete picture of what our kids look like. But so much of that is still in development. And the stuff that's really, in its infancy, is beginning to take a look at, and we started some conversations on this in conjunction with the career pathways at the high school and some of our other work on student engagement, how do you develop measures for some of these types of things that haven't traditionally been measured? And we want to have student portfolios and other things in the database that get at a lot of those qualities and characteristics too. But that, that's really at its foundational stages, like that's at its, really kind of at its initial beginning conversation point.
One last thing. We have a lot of great things happening in our district. And I'd like to start talking about maybe at our board retreat of how we can communicate some of these items, like how instruction is changing in our classroom to parents so they have more information about what's happening in the classroom. So I'd like to talk about that. And, I mean, that's ongoing, but that's important.
No, I agree. I've got, the coaches and I have even talked about some ideas, so I have some ideas for that. But I'm going to make you wait till the retreat.
Okay. We have the superintendent's consent agenda. Are there any items board members would like to remove from the consent agenda? Okay. Hearing none, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move that we approve the superintendent's consent agenda, items A through J.
My second?
Okay. Move by John, second by Margaret. We'll need a real call vote.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ciforyel?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Absent.
Mrs. Upner?
Yes. Five ayes, no nays, two absents. That motion passes. Action items. We have a lot of superintendent's action items. Go ahead.
Okay. The first one is approval resolution approving bank depositories. This is an annual thing where the board approves the funds that we hold our money, the banks where we hold our money.
Okay. Motion.
I move that the Board of Education approve the resolution which approves the banks, savings and loans, and investment pools, which the district may use as bank depositories for the 2017-2018 school year.
My second.
Move by John, second by Karen. Any discussion?
Just a quick question. Do we really use savings and loans? Do they exist anymore?
This is probably the motion that's used every year.
No, it's standard language. But actually, the more serious question I have is this, is
is this resolution approves the use of these investment pools. Do we, I mean, we've talked in other contexts about procurement processes. Are these subject to some sort of procurement process regarding the products they perform and either the returns they provide on our funds or the fees that they charge us? Or is that a different process?
Is procurement a different process? I mean, this is, you want me to talk about our investment process?
How do we choose these organizations?
Most of the banks we've used over many, many years. Our main bank here is Harris Bank that we do most of our depositing. Some of the other banks, Bank of America, Bank of New York, we use on our bonds, our bonds, so that's what those are. But PMA does a lot of our placement of our CDs and investments. And we do occasionally, or we do put out, we want an investment out to this date and put it out competitively on occasion.
So it's kind of on an ad hoc basis? Some things are procured competitively and others are single sourced with rationales?
Right, and PMA does a really good job of getting the best rates for us. They have a large network of banks that they work with on CDs in order for us to get good rates on those CDs. And when we do take them out competitively, we rarely can beat them because of their broad network of banks that they work with.
Thanks, didn't mean to surprise you.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mrs. Ciforio?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Upner?
Yes. Five ayes, no nays, two absents. That motion passes. Approval of stipend memorandum of agreement.
Okay, on this one, the work has been ongoing for over a year to clean up the various different stipends that we support at the grade levels and the dollar amounts that are appropriate for the amount of hours and the amount of participation and all those kinds of things that we have explained. And so now that the work has been done, we want to ask you to approve this, and it is information that you have become familiar with in the past, so there should be no new information that you haven't seen before.
Is there a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the memorandum of agreement developed by the stipend task force and ratified by the Elmhurst Teacher Council.
Okay, moved by Margaret, seconded by Kara. Any discussion?
I know there was a lot of work that was done on the stipend task force, and I'm wondering if a very quick synopsis of the work might be explained or talked about, too.
Keyword was "very quick," right? No, yeah, we started this process two years ago at the close of negotiations. The stipend committee was made up of about 30 teachers and some administrators. We actually took the current stipends in the existing contract, which has been a mess for about the last 20 years, and we broke them all down individually. We surveyed staff, we gathered information about every stipend, we removed stipends that were no longer in use or existence, we corrected titles, we corrected pay rates based on the information we had about the amount of hours required for each stipend, the different types of activities for each stipend, and we culled out areas that had been overpaid, areas that had been underpaid, areas that were no longer needed. And the committee was co-chaired by myself and also two teachers, John Gaunt from Sandberg and Ken Ross from the high school, and we broke down to levels, looked at each level of stipend for each one of the elementary, middle school, and high school levels, and made a determination based on that what the recommendation for a memorandum of agreement would be in order to clean up the entire process of stipends, which was our focus. It wasn't on money. It was all on process, putting systems in place to ensure that we don't end up in another 20-year mess down the line. And as a result of all of that, we were, without even looking at dollars, we were able to save money while completely funding all unpaid stipends that had been in existence over the last several years. So we feel pretty good about our work. It was a memorandum that was approved by the ETC and was simply awaiting board action and board approval. So your approval will take care of all of that and culminate two years' worth of work as a collaborative committee.
Thanks, Jim, for that feedback or synopsis. I wanted to make sure that we thank not only Ken Ross and John Gaunt, representing the high school, middle school, but all of the teachers, the certified staff, for persisting to get this done, that everyone wanted it done, but it was a lot of work and time-consuming, and they kept at it till it was done, and it was done right. And the key thing that I really wanted to point out, that we told them in person, but I want to make sure that everyone knows, is how they inform their membership so that nobody has any surprises, that we don't get surprises after its approval, that everyone, you know, provided input and feedback and they were communicated, you know, the final product to make sure that everyone knew what was coming. So there shouldn't be any surprises, and I wanted to commend them for that additional steps to inform everyone, which is what we're trying to do.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ciforio?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Upner?
Yes. It's five ayes, no nays, two absents. That motion passes. Approval of construction management.
So this has been the culmination of several months of discussion. We started talking about this back in April, and some of our initial investigation, we thought we were not 100% certain that we could verify that that was the direction we wanted to go, so we did an RFP process. Chris can address that, but at this point, we are very comfortable and confident in recommending these services, which will work in tandem with the architect to move any future facilities work along.
I'm sorry, it's at the bottom. I move that the Board of Education enter an agreement with ICI International Contractors for services related to construction management and estimating following the fee structure as outlined in the provided document.
Any discussion or questions?
I'd just like to say thanks to Frank and Chris and everybody who participated in this teamwork of going through this. I think we talked about this, and I said it in general terms, and you guys looked at it closely and you came up with a real good answer when I said, "Please demonstrate to the community that you're spending their dollars wisely, that you're getting the best services, and you can demonstrate it in a record form to show them." And I think the community should be very happy. Every time we ask about procurement processes, we're trying to look out for the taxpayers' dollar, we're trying to look for the quality of procured services and goods, and I think this just shows a real responsiveness by the administration when the board asks this to be done. So again, thank you for your hard work. I know you guys had to bust it to get it done in a short amount of time, and I think the community's grateful.
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mrs. Ciforio?
Yes.
Mrs. Upner?
Yes. It's five ayes, no nays, two absents. That motion carries.
Okay, so the next item, approval of architect. Again, actually, going all the way back to March, not April, and we've been talking about the need to secure these services to keep our Focus 205 work and planning process moving forward. Just to eliminate any kind of possible confusion, you have already approved a contract with White for some of these preliminary services. This is for, to engage in a relationship with them to serve as the architect moving forward, the work that they're already engaged in with some of the schematic designs and work that we've explained needed to happen that has already been approved. So this is kind of the part two of that that we talked about when we approved the first process.
I move that the Board of Education enter to an agreement with White and Company for architect services related to planning and conceptual design of future projects.
I'll second. Moved by John, seconded by Kara. Are there questions or comments?
Just, I didn't mean to, on the floor here, but this does tie into the last comments. First thing, let me go back a second and say, I didn't mean to pass over the firm that was chosen and not say something about that. It's an Elmhurst firm in the last thing, the RFP for the construction management, ICI, an Elmhurst firm, and we're very pleased to have a local organization of quality and good track record coming on to work with us. So I didn't mean to pass that over. On this one, on the approval of the architect, this is another example of demonstrating the community in a different format. With professional services, it is often a lot to do with the relationship that occurs, and so the procurement laws and procurement practices customarily used by school districts and other government agencies allow for choice of professional services in this way. In this case, White and Company has demonstrated its great work throughout the whole entire metro area with a number of educational projects. I think most people would consider it the leading architect for school districts. At the same time, this district has a long relationship in which White has demonstrated good work for the district. And so we ask for some demonstration that the public money's being spent well, and those rationales are provided both in, to the board, and they were provided in the previous agenda. I can't remember what that was. But again, thanks, Chris, and Frank, and everybody who worked on retaining a really good firm or recommending the retaining of a very good firm for the continued representation of the district's needs in architectural services.
I had one thought, too. White has knowledge of our buildings that can't really be matched by other firms for the cost, so there's, I believe, a cost savings there that we're going to have using White.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Ciforio?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mrs. Upner?
Yes. Five ayes, no nays, two absents. That motion passes.
Approval of thought exchange.
Okay, we had explained that we were going to, in Phase Two of Focus 205, we were going to need to secure a variety of services to continue with our community engagement and our planning. And the construction manager and the architect, of course, were one of those things. But we also have talked about all the kindergarten and getting additional input on that as just one other example. The thought exchange survey that we gave this past year was well-received by the community. It gave us good information. The support that we received from the thought exchange consultants that worked with us to help us provide reports, call data, anything we needed was excellent, some of the best I've ever experienced and people I've worked with. We're recommending that the board approve a contract in which Thought Exchange would provide unlimited services, meaning the potential for multiple community engagements like we had with the last survey. Our goal would be to administer one approximately the third week in September, and this would be a little bit more targeted, more specific to where we are now in the process. They gave us multiple options for a contract. Their base price is $20,000 for the year. Because of the nature of what we asked them to do last year, they quoted us a price of $16,000 for what they did with us last year. So if you remember that number, that's because of the particulars of that particular work that we engaged in with them last year. But what they have proposed to us is to give us a $2,000 a year discount to $18,000. We would approve a two-year relationship with them with the opportunity to cancel after one year. And so because of the unknown nature of this work, we're, the other option would be a two-year contract at a discounted rate, but the discount, the savings, wouldn't be that great. We did not feel that that was, not knowing that we would need those services for two full years, that that was the way to go. So we're recommending that we engage in a relationship to help us with our community engagement for Part Two of Focus 205, where it would be a two-year contract at $18,000 a year with the option of canceling after one year. So we're really only committing to one year. And that's what we would encourage you to support so that we can begin our planning at this point for that fall survey.
Do you need a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve a two-year service agreement with Thought Exchange at an annual cost of $18,000 per year for unlimited services with the option to cancel the agreement after one year.
I second the mo-
Moved by Karen. Discussion? Go ahead.
I want to go back, and this is maybe a statement and trying to reframe kind of where we are and how we ended up with this. I think at the end of the Focus 205 presentation, there was discussion from the community that said, "You've asked us to make a decision, and it's very difficult to make a decision without having price tags placed on here." And we said, "You're absolutely correct, but in order to put a price tag on there, we're going to have to do some additional work." That additional work included the architect, trying to figure out what it would look like to build these things out.
Construction company.
Construction company, to figure out what that piece would look like. Then we stated, "Once we get those pieces together, we would go back to the community and say, 'This is what the options look like. Now you give us feedback to say, 'Which of these options do you prefer? Which of these options make the better sense for you?'" And that's exactly what we're doing with this thought exchange, so trying to put this piece into context.
I think that's very well said, and that is actually the exact nature of the type of, you know, survey that we're trying to put together. So yes, that very accurately summarizes that, I believe.
Exchange is well-received by the community. That was one of our strongest points of District, or Focus 205. So it'd be smart for us to continue with this process with Thought Exchange.
Yeah, I just love the fact that we're trying to get more and more people to provide feedback, because that's what we're going to need. The more feedback that we get, the better informed decisions.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufan?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes.
Mrs. Eubner?
Yes, five I's, no N's, two abs, and that motion passes.
Okay.
All right, the remaining items are a series of donations to several of our schools. The first is an annual donation that the foundation makes to support the York Student Enrichment Team, which is an organization to try to provide opportunities for York students to participate in activities at the school, in case there are certain families or certain students that are experiencing hardship in one way or another. And this year's donation is approximately $39,000, and we would like to release that money so it can be used for the upcoming school year.
I move that the Board of Education approve the acceptance of a donation of $39,000 from the District 205 Foundation on behalf of the York Student Enrichment Team, YSET. This donation is accepted in accordance with Policy 880, Gifts to the District.
I'll second that motion.
Moved by Margaret, seconded by John. Go ahead.
First off, I want to say thank you to the YSET Committee, who works really hard to make sure they go through it and evaluate and look at the costs and the students who are, and families who perhaps wouldn't be able to participate in the full York environment without this support. Recognizing that committee, I also want to recognize all the people who support YSET throughout the community, you know, that's both inside and outside of York. And obviously, I want to thank the foundation for always serving as a, being very willing to help YSET and transfer this money forward to our district.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufan?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes.
Mrs. Eubner?
Yes, five I's, no N's, two abs, and that motion passes.
Yeah, this next one is actually unique and atypical from what you typically would see on the agenda, which I probably should have thought about my words a little more carefully there. But the Rotary Club has been very supportive of the schools in terms of scholarships and other areas, and has been wanting to do something about opioid addiction for several years, and has been wanting to work with the school to try to figure out a way that it could solidify some type of a donation to support this. They've had funds designated, we've been having conversations for almost two years, for reasons that we don't need to go into here, to try to figure out exactly what that could look like. And Melissa De La Rosa did a lot of work with this, with the student services people at the high school, to try to figure out how we could partner with agencies and how we could actually do something that would support students in need that might not otherwise have the opportunity to receive this assistance. And they came up with a unique opportunity to partner with Rosecrantz to provide counseling services for students. And the goal is to try to early identify, not, you know, maybe after a student is falling into addiction or serious behaviors, but to kind of pre-identify students who might be prone to this type of thing for various reasons, self-medicating and, you know, anxiety and other things like that, that have been warning signs. And work with Rosecrantz. And what's really unique about this is to actually allocate a space at the high school where the interior of the room and the facility is designed for this type of counseling and/or other small group meetings. So they'll actually, the Rotary is actually going to support the space in the high school as well as the partnership with Rosecrantz, and then rely on the school to help identify the kids and work with Rosecrantz to implement this. So it's a creative program, and we think it will be beneficial to students.
I move that the Board of Education approve acceptance of the donation from the Rotary Club of Elmhurst in an amount of $10,000. This donation is accepted in accordance with Policy 880, Gifts to the District.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, moved by Karen, seconded by John. Go ahead.
I really wanted to thank everyone who's been involved with this process. Dave, your relationship with Rotary has been significant, you know, Erin's work, Melissa's work, the Rotary, you know, really wanting to help out in the community, and I love the fact that we're making this happen. As I stated earlier, I've got a 25-year-old, who's my oldest, and I remember the first meeting that we had at York with the opiate situation, coming from the drug highway right out here of Elmhurst, that they wanted to come into our communities. And so I really am strongly thanking everyone for providing space and professionals to build small group areas, for these students to have a place, like we hear about, you know, the art teacher, whatever it happens to be, to create the space where these kids will find someone who's going to help them, and help them early. So thank you to everyone.
Mrs. Stufan?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes.
Mrs. Eubner?
Yes, five I's, no N's, two abs, and that motion passes. Transition Center.
Okay, the For Real Blender Company is donating a state-of-the-art blender to the Transition Center. The amount of the donation is $7,945. This is to help with the vocational training experiences. This machine makes smoothies and milkshakes. And as you may know, but just to explain, the Transition Center is for students that have various disabilities, and it's designed to help them transition from high school into the world of work and independent life. And so this donation is certainly appreciated.
I move that the Board of Education approve acceptance of the donations from the For Real Blender Company in an amount of $7,945. This donation is accepted in accordance with Policy 880, Gifts to the District.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, moved by Karen, seconded by Kara. Go ahead.
Well, thank you to the company. I don't know who has the relationship, so I apologize for not asking that ahead of time, but I love the fact that they're helping out our students at the Transition Center. If you've never been there, you know, go there. It's a, what a positive environment for these students to see that, you know, we're transitioning them through the system out of York into, you know, being on their own in various different ways. So they, the Transition Center does an awesome job. I know that we heard at the last meeting from one of our former students, but I've heard from other students as well. So thanks to the faculty there, thank you for their relationship with these companies to provide the donations.
Mrs. Stufan?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Eubner?
Yes, five I's, no N's, two abs, and that motion passes.
Okay, the Jackson PTA, amount of $22,410 for a variety of items, classroom audio enhancement system, book bins, easel pads to support the ELA curriculum. We have pencil sharpeners, guided reading enhancements, and a concrete ramp to be installed following some playground service improvement work. So that's six different targeted items in a total of $22,410.
I move that the Board of Education approve acceptance of the donation from the Jackson School PTA in the amount of $22,410. This donation is accepted in accordance with Policy 880, Gifts to the District.
I second the motion.
I'm not used to doing the motion. Okay, moved by me, seconded by Karen. I wanted to say thank you to the Jackson PTA. They work very closely with the staff and principal to understand the needs of our students, so you see a lot of different items here. So they work closely, and this is all for the students. So thank you very much, this is very generous.
Mrs. Eubner?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufan?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Okay, five I's, no N's, two abs, and that motion carries. Two more donations.
All right, so Field School PTA, also multiple items. The total amount of this donation, $8,591. Three picnic tables for the school grounds, headphone sets per classroom, sensory toolbox kits, is what they're calling it. And then also on there, a smart board, and also on there additional support for the classroom libraries for our guided reading program at that school.
I'll make a motion that the Board of Education approve acceptance of the donation from the Field School PTA in an amount of $8,591, and this donation is accepted in accordance with Policy 880, Gifts to the District.
I'll second.
Moved by Kara, seconded by John.
So just wanted to particularly thank the PTA at Field for the sensory toolbox kits and those headphones. I know they've become quite popular and a big hit in all the classrooms. So in addition to all the other great things you're purchasing, I know that was a highlight for a lot of the kids. So thank you for all your work to make all that happen.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufan?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Eubner?
Yes, five I's, no N's, two abs, and that motion passes.
Okay, and finally, the Jefferson PTA would like to donate $70,000 to me. I just wanted to see if anybody was still paying attention. I knew she was sitting back there. This one hasn't been easy. No, the Jefferson School PTA would like to donate $70,000 for, to go toward updating the school playground area.
I move that the Board of Education approve acceptance of the donation from the Jefferson School PTA in an amount of $70,000. This donation is accepted in accordance with Policy 880, Gifts to the District.
I'll second.
Wow, Leslie, and your PTA president, and all of the volunteers, thank you so much for such a generous gift. I know that, I always wonder, you know, why we have to fund the playgrounds, wondering how, why we can't get grants from the state or federal or whatever, like park districts do. But with that said, thank you, community, for fully supporting your school.
I wanted to add something to you, and this is a very large donation, but it helps all the schools, because this can offload some of the maintenance items, some of the maintenance that are needed at other schools. It can free up some of our resources for those items at other schools. So it's helping all of our schools with these donations. Our parents are helping. Thank you.
Mrs. Stufan?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Eubner?
Yes, that's five I's, no N's, two abs, and that motion carries. We have action on closed session item. John?
Found it. I move that the Board of Education approve Mary Ann Lemke as Executive Director of Research and Program Analysis with a start date of July 14, 2017, and a base salary of $133,382.
I second the motion.
Okay, moved by John, seconded by Karen. You want to say a few words?
Just want to say, welcome to our district. We're very glad to have you. If you get a chance, take a look at her resume. She comes to us with some very impressive experiences to bring, to make things more quality experience here in Elmhurst. And as you can see, we're very anxious to see what the research is going to show us in terms of how all these things are going to work. And we're very grateful to have you and welcome you.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufan?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes.
Mrs. Eubner?
Yes, five I's, no N's, two abs, and that motion passes. Congratulations.
Okay, so for Superintendent's Communication, five Freedom of Information requests were received, one requesting specific purchasing records, which was granted, two requesting specific contract information, which were granted, one requesting board meeting minutes, which was granted, one requesting specific course information, which was granted. Like to thank our presenters for coming out tonight and sharing some of their experiences related to our student achievement priorities with the Board. And certainly want to welcome Mary Ann. I won't go into great detail here, but John is correct, she has some terrific experiences, including working for the American Institute for Research and the U.S. Department of Education. So we look forward to getting started with her. In fact, I am going to start, we're going to start that on Monday, aren't we? So then, I wanted to give a report on LUDA, the LUDA Conference, that was recently held, the Spring Symposium is what they call it. And it's not good news. It dwelled, you know, of course, with the times that we're in here, primarily with what's going on with the state and the budget. So for the purpose of highlighting these things, I'm not going to read this verbatim, but I want to give, I do think it's important, these things are likely going to be coming down the pike pretty quick here, and I think we have to put these in public. There, it may not appear this way, but there actually has been a fair amount of bicameral and bipartisan cooperation in Springfield. The issue is really a power struggle between Governor Rauner and Speaker Madigan. So it's been, it's been difficult. This is kind of a chronology of, or not a chronology, but a summary of where we're at. The governor did not sign a school funding bill that was presented to him because of a last-minute amendment related to legacy costs in the Chicago pension system, which, without getting into detail, would ultimately result in Chicago being able to accumulate, receive more money in general state aid under the new school funding formula than it otherwise would have, which would take money from other districts. The evidence-based funding model is based on research and has a lot of positives and is a better alternative than what we currently have in the whole, and probably in the long run for the state. The problem is, from a local standpoint, we don't really benefit from it. And because there is a clause in there that indicates that all districts will be held harmless, the assumption is that districts like ours are going to not harmless, the assumption is that districts like ours are going to not experience any kind of cutbacks, except that the governor won't sign any bill that does not include any kind of a property tax freeze. And because any new money that goes into the formula will go to the neediest schools first, we, in essence, will not be held harmless. We will, and Chris will explain that in a minute, some of the impacts that will hit us if a property tax freeze comes into existence. On top of that, the state owes us $3.7 million in categorical payments. Those are required by law. We don't have any choice but to provide those services, transportation, special education, et cetera, the types of things. And since most of our money is local money, we don't get a lot of general state aid, that comprises a significant amount of the money that we get from the state. And when you talk about the fact that the city is refusing to honor its 2004 IGA, and that, and declare surplus in TIF 1, that adds up to $2.6 million. I have now just said $8.4 million in real money. A recent ruling in, in the courts, which is supposed to be resolved by the end of June, the state is supposed to present a plan to pay the $2 billion it owes in Medicaid payments. It's $2 billion that the state doesn't have, which is why it owes the money. And if it's forced to pay that, that will have an even greater impact on general state aid and categorical payments and everything else, because what money it has been paying the schools will go elsewhere. So it's not, it's not pretty. So I asked, Chris put together some information on what a property tax freeze, the impact it would have, and I asked him to explain that a little bit.
So we talk about the tax levy every year in November and December, then we talk about the tax extension when they come out in late March, April. School districts under the tax cap are allowed CPI or inflationary increases each year. These increases are fair and certainly not excessive. CPI over the, in recent years, has been extremely low. It's especially, you know, small increases when we're talking about a service organization that's facing steadily increasing enrollments, increasing diversity in low-income student population, increasing needs of our students. So a property tax freeze would have a compounding negative impact on local funding for District 205. The first analysis here, this is just the impact that a property tax freeze would have on our annual revenues, which shows a million dollars in 2018, $3 million in '19, $4.2 million in 2020, $4.3 million in 2021, $4.5 million in 2022. So a two-year tax freeze on the next slide shows that in 2022, that would have had a $17.3 million impact on our fund balance. And then if you go to the next slide, a four-year property tax freeze is even more substantial with annual, the impact on our annual revenues in '18, a million; 2019, $3 million; 2020, $5.3 million; 2021, $7.5 million; and 2022, $8.8 million. So then on the last slide, that over the five years, in 2022, that would have a $25.8 million impact on our fund balance if the four-year property tax freeze was passed.
So in my initial memo before Chris ran these numbers, you saw my number of $2.1 million was a general estimate that we put together a while ago that we had been using. He came up with some more accurate and specific numbers. The bottom line is, it's a lot of money. With the numbers that I was using, and I don't know if Chris can speak to this, because he hasn't been prepared to calculate it, but in my numbers, it would save the average taxpayer in Elmhurst about $40 a year, while costing us, you know, this much money, which is a significant impact to programs and student experiences, would be devastating.
I think we need to get more active with LUND again, our Legislative Educational Network of DuPage. We were very active in that a few years ago, and I think it's something that we could talk about, you know, this summer at the next board meeting.
And we could have us, community members, call legislators and ask them to balance a budget and approve a budget and be fiscally responsible.
Some very personal views. That living here in Elmhurst has been a great thing for me and my family, and my kids just left the system, and I'm going to get all choked up again. The last one having just graduated a few weeks ago. But the thing that's remarkable about this community is, first of all, the spirit of giving that you see in there. And the second thing is that it's a place where public education is really, really working. It's a place where resources are brought to those kids that need extra resources. The community supports them. When we've seen the communities come together, there's the love of the teacher, sure, but there's the support of all the kids in a community. And when you see the kids pull together, you look at that and you go, that's what a public school is supposed to be. That's supposed to bring a community together. We see that all the time, example after example, in this community. I'm not sure why it is the state feels a need to withdraw local control on an income tax increase. We were elected to pass a budget, to raise taxes. If we believe that's what the community wanted, we were told, keep it to CPI. And that's what we do, year by year. And I don't understand why it's so urgent to risk such a valuable system that's working in a community where it's working, because it's working, it's not working in some other places. And it's fortunate that it is working here. And we do recognize our responsibility in the new funding approach that reallocates general state aid, but why it's married to this removal of local control on property taxes is just simply beyond my understanding. This community has wanted to support its school system, and I don't understand why that control has to be removed as a condition of the state, God forbid, passing a budget at all. So that's my personal view.
Board Communications. Okay. Hearing none, we'll talk about upcoming meetings. Thursday, July 13, Special Board of Education meeting. The Board will be talking with cabinet members about how a continuous improvement, talking about our meetings, communication, so it's an annual retreat. Tuesday, July 18, a regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting, and Tuesday, August 8, a regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting. When we've reached the end of the agenda, I'll declare the meeting adjourned.